We will start 30 seconds or five o'clock on the button. We will start our Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 Town Council meeting. We have all of council present and we will call this meeting to order starting by the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
Heavenly Father, thank you once, many, million times again for everything that you've done for this town, everything you've done for my family and all of our people. The last month or so, I've learned basically a refresher course of just how strong and powerful you are. The millions of people, hundreds of people and thousands of people that were praying for my grandson over the last six weeks or so. You heard them, you healed him, he's home with us now and just thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. We have adoption of the agenda, Mr. Sees. Any changes?
No ma'am, no changes to the agenda.
Your motion to approve?
A move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye opposed. We have minutes from two meetings. One was our regular meeting minutes of nine of September 12th and then the workshop. So on the regular meeting minutes, did you see if there are any edits or changes to be made? If not, is there a motion to accept?
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye opposed. That's unanimous. We had the quarterly CIP workshop on July 18th. If there were no changes, is there a motion to accept?
A move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye opposed. We're gonna get this family going unless we'll put him up to run the meeting.
We have a few presentations and I will come down first as I read for County School District Character Student of the Month. Um, very special. Thank you. So, just right on time, Dr. Corley. Several, many years ago, the school district came up with this character trait of the month. While we have no control over the school district with their budget or anything, we wanted to help celebrate the student that came from the Bluffton Cluster. So there are different clusters around the county. The Bluffton Cluster is the largest cluster and it runs from kindergarten to 12th grade. So a year before, pre-K? It's pre-K to 12th grade, thank you. So when you are selected and we are here celebrating the student, it's not from just your grade, it's not from just your school, it's from all the schools in our cluster, from pre-K to high school. So that's a big deal and we, as a council, like to celebrate this. So tonight, we're celebrating a second grader and his little brother, right? We're gonna put him up here. Ashton Baker-Jones. So Ashton, if you'll come forward, whomever you want to come with. Is that your brother? Do you want him up here? Okay, come on. And Dr. Corley and all the family. Ashton is a second grader at Red Cedar Elementary. He's being recognized for the character traits of friendship and kindness and boy, there are a lot of people that aren't here tonight that need to know about that. And we have Ashton's family and we have staff and we have this principal here. Some who would like to talk about Ashton.
I will. Ms. Cubic, you wanna come up too? Okay, this is his teacher and I'm Dr. Becky Hannah, I'm the school counselor at Red Cedar. I have a few things to say and I'm so excited to talk about him. This is what his teacher said about him and then she has a few more things she wants to add. So I am overjoyed to have Ashton Baker-Jones nominated for our Grade Level Character Education Student of the Month for August. Starting second grade in the big kid hall can be a scary thing for some students, especially if they're new to the school. I had a room full of excited second graders when two additional kids from another class joined our class. One was new to Red Cedar and the other was a bit timid. Ashton took it upon himself to set aside any reservations about being a new second grader with a teacher with whom he was uncertain about and welcomed these two boys immediately. He made certain that they knew he was glad they were in his class. At luncheon during recess, he made sure that his two new friends lined up with him and knew exactly what they needed to do next. Several other teachers witnessed Ashton caring for and including his two new friends and made a point to come tell me how it touched their hearts to see this. Nothing made me prouder of my students than when friendship and kindness is shown, when it comes from the bottom of their heart. I truly believe that this opportunity for Ashton to show what an amazing young man he is has started his year off on the right foot. It certainly has helped his classmates see an outstanding role model for how to be kind and how to be an outstanding friend. I anticipate a great year of learning is ahead for Ashton Baker-Jones. One thing is certain, he will always be a friend if you need one.
So Ashton, he plays it pretty close to the vest. He's not super emotional, he leaves that to his teacher. But he always looks for ways to help other kids, even if he is having a rough day, he definitely is, he shines in this area. So I know that he is doing, from the beginning of the year till now, his grades have come up, he is like walked with a different kind of swagger. He just needed the opportunity to show who he truly was, but this is what happens when you have a strong family and a great school system, you can get these kids to really shine. So I'm super proud of him.
Not many people get these. Have you ever heard about challenge coins? Okay, well, you find Chief and he can explain it to you. This is the one from Bluffton and we give these out to our Students of the Month and very, very few others. So that's for you. And then what we rarely ever see is the Bluffton Police Department challenge coin. So that's pretty cool to have too and he will explain that. I'm sure he comes to Red Cedar and you can get him to explain that. Do y'all know what it is? Okay, well, we're gonna tell him. And then a certificate that your mom and dad can frame and you can say, hey, Bluffton Town Council knows who I am, as we do. So hold that, we'll get a picture. Everyone, tight, 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 tight.
Alright, everyone ready?
Doctor Corley does great work at your school. Thank you. Students, staff and parents. Student staffs and parents have a great leader, I was gonna say. Thank you. And your little brother, Behate. You may pull that number one down every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, my sweetie. We also have several collaborations that I'm not gonna read today, but we have a National Security Month and I see Kevin, they always say, shut up, we appreciate all the planners and all the training. You have a month for everything. And we have Cyber Security Awareness Month, which is kind of the hot topic these days with fields of careers and other things. So we appreciate that. Was Tracy gonna accept that? Come on, Steve. So you can accept this. We'll just gotta make sure you know what it says. Kevin, you want a picture? Good time. Thank you.
And Ashley, a lot of her presentations. This was the award Ashley came here from unknown. Here, bring us our muglitz. Or champagne bucket, you know. Mayor and council, thank you so much for having me here tonight. I am honored to be here to present the 2023 Municipal Achievement Award for your Neighborhood Assistance Program. Mayor Solka and some others were at our annual meeting back in July to formally accept this award, but we love to come back to the hometown and share it with the entire council and staff in your community as well. There were 26 other entries this year, so lots of competition. You all won in the Public Service category. I don't know if you've ever won in that category before, this was your first time. Okay, great. You've won and probably all the others, right? But this one quickly stood out among the rest and we have a video to show that shows exactly why this project won the achievement award.
Public Service Category: The Town of Bluffton. The Town of Bluffton wanted to promote housing affordability in the face of strong population growth and development while also halting the deterioration of older neighborhoods. The town also focused on retaining residents whose families have lived in the area for generations, including its Gullah descendants who have contributed to the town's character. Finally, the town aimed to reduce the pollution coming from a lack of planned infrastructure such as septic tanks. To achieve these goals, the town established the Neighborhood Assistance Program in 2016.
With all of our growth, we were really starting to see the benefits, but also the challenges. And the challenges where we had so many residents that lived here long before I moved here, long before I was born, that gave their heart and soul to Bluffton. And it was the Gullah descendants that wanted to stay in their home. They had a lot of people pushing them to sell their property and if we didn't do something at a town level, we were gonna see those residents give up and move away and this town would be a different town than what it is today.
The Bluffton Neighborhood Assistance Program helps with repairs, hazard cleanup, private road repair, tree removals, and septic cleanup. The program also helps establish residential street addresses to guide emergency services and provides heirs property title insurance.
Bluffton has always been the small town feel where everyone is important and we would like to maintain that integrity. This is a great asset to our community that Bluffton is one of the communities that believe in affordable housing and this method because of the cost of real estate gives us an opportunity to balance in some ways. And this balance means that even though we can't afford to give everyone that opportunity to have affordable housing, gives them the opportunity to remain in the housing that they still love and cherish.
The program is available to residents based on income requirements and requires no funding from the residents to participate. It seeks out applications from residents through simple word of mouth as well as service programs, churches, schools, and police to identify residents in need.
Being born and raised in Bluffton, I kinda know everyone, family oriented, so kind of a face with a name type title. You know, they kinda feel welcome, they feel at ease. Always tell them, always have applications on me. Went to a meeting and had several applications with me. So people kinda feel easy talking to me and picking up applications and just trying to get work done. So I just kinda let them know if I'm home, you can come and pick up an application or I'll come to you or help you fill it out, just to kinda make it easier for the residents. It's not a scary process.
There is a $20,000 limit of town funds for each project which can be supplemented by nonprofit groups. Since 2016, the number of residents helped has grown substantially. In the 2022 fiscal year, the program served 54 residents using a budget of $222,862. The Town of Bluffton is striving to build a safer, more vibrant community for all of its residents.
One of the many reasons we do this project is not only to recognize our cities and towns for the outstanding work they do, but also to be a model for other cities and towns and really an inspiration. So thank you for submitting this project and thank you for letting us help share it with the rest of the state. Thank you so much. Congratulations again. Yes. And you're welcome to stay.
Please come in early so I wanna split.
I think you can get ahead of traffic. Next, we have Jared who comes often, but always wonderful to see him. He's going to do an update on the Burnt Church Road Improvement Project, which, as we all know, very little of that is in the town and we don't own the road, but it's very important to our residents. So if anyone who's here that came for the presentation has questions, just get them to our town clerk or to one of us, it's not a workshop and we'll make sure we get answers and also maybe your presentation could be sent out or uploaded.
Yeah, we provided it to town staff, so it's, you guys have it.
Great. So the presentation for later will be on.
Where's the lollipops?
I didn't bring any today. No, that's good, I like it. I didn't know that was candy that I stole from my kids, that we had a whole candy dish that they needed reading, so I helped them read. I always thank you, Mayor Solka, thank you Town Council for the opportunity to come and give an update on this project here on Burnt Church Road. I always love coming here, y'all are always doing great things, just little things that pink breast cancer awareness, I'm assuming that's what it's for.
It is.
So nobody said it, it wasn't written on there, I just picked it up. So good, good job on that and even to Ashton, I know he's not here, but just recognizing little guys like that, I've got my own little ones and that means the world to see that. And just as much to Ashton's parents, so it speaks a lot about the community. So anyways, to talk about road improvements, I can talk about roads all day, but for your sake, this is just a quick in stride update. So to tell you what we have going on, some of the work that we've done and where we're going with this project. As you mentioned, this is a road on the outer edge of Town of Bluffton where Town of Bluffton and Unincorporated meet up. It is also not a road that Beaufort County owns either, so it's work that we're all doing together as we interact with different jurisdictions. So see if I've got control. Yes. So just a little bit about the project, you guys are well aware, but those that are either in the audience or watching online, this is 1.3 miles, so it extends from Bluffton Parkway down to All Joy or Bridge Street there. And what we're looking at is improving that with some safety improvements. We hear about safety and speeding. Those are usually the two biggest concerns when we're looking at a project is safety. Capacity is not so much in this, this particular road project, we are widening and I'll talk about that, but it's not our widening where we're adding four lanes or larger. So it's more to address the safety and the speeding part elements. So what have we done so far? So we started this project last year, we kicked it off and we kicked it off with a public information meeting. So basically, we wanted to gain input from the public. The residents live in and around and use the road. Obviously, there's two schools on the road on the southern portion, so there's a lot of people that use the road that don't necessarily live on the road. So we're seeking that input. We posted this, this was in November of last year, we posted it to our website, sent out notices. We had a pretty, pretty good turnout there, as you can see, about 45 people and got some responses. And even beyond that, we had a online forum. And even beyond that, uh, we, we had a online forum for comments that we could receive for another, uh, 30 days or so, uh, towards the end of last year. So, um, with that, that really helped us kickstart the project and address the concerns. As you can see there, the concerns were, um, well, what is this gonna look like? I live on there, there's a lot of driveways, how's this gonna impact my property? We didn't have those answers at that time, um, because we were just getting started with the project and conceptually, um, bringing the project to the public. So, um, since then, we've also met with the school district. As mentioned, there's two schools there on the south end of the road, and they have some plans to address the internal flow of those two schools and how they operate and how they, um, address. If you've been there during school time, there's a lot of drop-off with the elementary schools and queuing, so we wanna make sure there's safe opportunity for those, um, for those drivers, as well as the pedestrians that are, they're either walking their kids to school or riding their kids to with golf carts and such. So, after this meeting, our next, our next point of input is, uh, we've done design, we're basically about 30% design, so that's where we kinda break a project into three stages, 30%, 60%, and 100%. And each stage represents something different, so we're, we're about to move from conceptual to full design, and then at 60%, we'll get into right-of-way acquisition and permitting, and then obviously 100% to construction. So, um, after this meeting, we're scheduling and working to host another public input meeting coming in November 9th, um, so that'll be there at our Bluffton Recreation Center off of Ulmer Road. Uh, we're gonna be sending out postcards. Uh, we ask that you guys please encourage town residents and those that you communicate about this, so their voice, uh, can be heard, so they can see the work product that we've got so far, and also give input as we, as we tailor this design towards what we all want it to be. So, let's take a look about what we have, oops, what we have so far. So this is artist rendering, and this is with your back towards Alljoy or Bridge Street, looking northern, towards 278, and you see school here. So what we have is a three-lane road. Again, there is widening component, but it's not so much for capacity, it's more for safety. What that, that third lane does, it provides the opportunity for, uh, folks to pull in the median, so there can still be safe passageway of the vehiculars, vehicles as they traverse the road, um, while, while cars are queuing up to turn left in, uh, into the schools. So, starting from the left where you see the, the lady walking with the dog in the Dalmatian, um, so we have a 10-foot pathway on the roadside, uh, and then a grass strip, and then a four-foot bike way on the road. So this continues from, the northern part of Burnt Church has this bike pathway, so this is a continuation all the way down south, so you can traverse the entire, um, Bluff, Burnt Church on, on the road with the, uh, if you choose to ride your bicycle. Then a 12-foot lane, 11-foot median, 12-foot lane, um, and, and another bike path, and grass strip, and then a six-foot sidewalk on the right side. So, um, that's the kinda, uh, cross-section that we're looking at. That is still being tweaked and modified as we develop that, coordinate with DOT, and also work through right-of-way. What we're doing right now, we're trying to get that approved at DOT, and, um, one of the major concerns that we had at the first meeting was property, uh, impacts. So there's a lot of property that, just by crunching that in a little bit, um, we've been able to save a little bit of the right-of-way needs, which has greatly reduced the impacts that we're gonna have. So, um, that'll be shared a little bit more at the public information meeting, they'll have a layout of the entire roadway, but this is, this is the kinda look and feel of what we're aiming towards. Um, and just to describe that, some of those tasks that have been completed so far, so obviously the field survey, um, this is conceptual-level design with the artist rendering, and we've coordinated with DOT on the traffic analysis, so we had initially a traffic impact, or a traffic study that helped describe these recommendations. We've coordinated with the Cultural Resources Survey, um, the wetlands, we started with the wetlands, there's no jurisdictional wetlands on this project, which, that doesn't happen very often in the Low Country, so, uh, we're glad to check that box and say yes on the wetlands. No protected species, a Phase 1 environmental, there was no major, um, environmental concern, so, um, again, that's a big checkbox, and when any infrastructure project, and then also specimens, so we're, we've got a tree survey, and we're working with county and town, um, ordinances for that mitigation requirements. The other big part, um, other than the three lanes and, and the pedestrian passway, is the intersection at Bruin Road. Oh, I skipped ahead of myself. Let me talk about why that's, why that's a big deal, 'cause the crash safety data. So this is, uh, the crash model, you can see the bright spot there at Bluffton Parkway, obviously a lot of crashes there, and then another kinda brighter spot there at Bruin, because we have the skewed intersection, and then at Ulmer, um, and at the end of the street, at Alljoy, a little bit there. So, um, two, today, over the last three years, a total of 50 crashes, so it doesn't, that doesn't sound unfamiliar to you guys, I'm sure, uh, knowing that, that this avenue has some, uh, crash potential. So, um, the intersection at Bruin Road is probably a point. So what we've done at Bruin Road is we did a couple different analyses. Again, um, traffic is not the, the issue here, capacity's not the issue. So, we did, uh, intersection analysis, what works best? Well, a signal would work at this location, um, but what we found is that a roundabout works as well as the signal does for capacity, but what the roundabout does, different than the traffic signal, is that it also helps solve the, the speeding and the safety. So you gotta slow down as you approach, and you, you have to gradually speed up as you exit, versus the, the, the safety, um, has a different component on the, on the traffic signal, you're not necessarily slowing down every time you approach the traffic signal. We also looked at the no-build option, which is what we have today, and, and a four-way stop option. So out of all those different alternatives for the intersection, this was what was deemed, um, the preferred alternative based off traffic impacts. And again, this is looking northward, so you can see the pathways as they approach, so you got pedestrian crossings with high reflectivity, um, and then that's a mountable, a mountable, um, inside concrete pad on the, on the roundabout there, so it's safe for vehicles, for trucks, and for emergency access vehicles. Uh, and just, this talks about a little bit of, of the specifics in regards to what I just described, but the big thing is the single-lane roundabout. There, these are the items that we heard at the first public input meeting, it resolves operational issues, improves safety, and it helps control vehicle speeds. Those, so not only does it meet from a trafficability, but it meets the threshold of what the public, um, first brought to our attention about what do we wanna see on this road. So a little bit about where we're going, um, the rest of the schedule. So, again, we're at 30% design, um, the next step is to take this to DOT, um, and after our public meeting in November, um, take the cross-section and get that approved. Once we have the cross-section, we can move into full design where we can start, okay, what are the real impacts to each individual and specific project, or, um, property? And that way, we can then start moving the project forward in full design, and like I said, at 60% design is where we get into right-of-way acquisition, which is next summer. And, and then from there, um, obviously 100% design somewhere in between next summer and, and the following, um, going out to bid and begin construction in the fall of 25. I know that sounds like a long way away, um, but in infrastructure world, that's, that's not, um, a very long process, but we hope to, to gain some improvements in that schedule along the way, so this is, worst-case scenario is our, our goal, and we hope to beat this as much as we can. A couple of other updates that are associated with this that, just to let you know about, is in addition to this going on in the area, we are moving forward with, um, two other projects closely related to this, is the Alljoy Sidewalk or Pathway, um, basically starting from this point and, and going all the way down Alljoy, and then also on, and that project is under design, finished design, getting ready to go out to bid, so that's the status of that project as part of the sales tax program. And also part of the sales tax program is the Pathway Project along, uh, Ulmer and Shad. So, at the completion of those two projects and this project, we're introducing a, a real feeling of walkability in this region and the neighborhood, basically a continuation of the walkability factor that we have already downtown, that you guys have done a great job, also tying into the sidewalk project that y'all previously committed, uh, completed on Bridge Street. So, that's where we are. Like I said, this is just a quick in-stride update for you guys, and with that, gladly take any questions.
Are there any questions on this? Ms. Frazier?
Could you go back to the slide where the roundabout sketch is shown? Um, so looking at this, I just have a question on, have you all, or are you giving considerations to pedestrian safety? Um, like as you look at the roundabout, I see the crosswalk there, but, um, what's gonna be in place to mitigate, like who's going first in terms of an issue we deal with now, like pedestrians just automatically wanna go, but cars coming around at roundabout might be like, well, I'm gonna go anyway. How do you?
In addition to what you see here, there'll be signage, so different than a signal. At a signal, you have a stop vehicle, and then you have the, the walk ahead, um, so you don't have that on a roundabout, 'cause it's continuous motion, but it will be signed and dedicated. One thing that we do a lot is education. I was riding in a vehicle with an employee, and they were in the total wrong lane, it's like, you can't do this, you can't do this! And, uh, he's like, no, this is how you drive a roundabout, and I was like, no, 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 we need some education here. So, that's a different thing, uh, add-on, um, is education on how we use these roundabouts. This is a single-lane roundabout, so that pedestrian, um, interface is a little bit easier than what we have on, on, um, the two-lane roundabouts that we have in the area, or the, the ones on Burnt Church, or, um, Bluffton Parkway and 46. So, I hope that answers your question.
A little bit. I would just encourage you to inquire on some other, uh, routes, 'cause we see that even in non-roundabout situations, just as the frequency of people traveling and walking and getting from place to place, how that sometimes has become an, an issue.
Understood, yeah. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, Jared, go back to the first slide, the first picture that you had up there. There you go. Gotta move those palm trees, they're too close to the power line.
They're gonna be cut down.
They'll cut them down. They look real good in that picture, but you can't have that.
No, I'm with you 100% there.
Is that your comment?
That's all.
Anything on this? Mr. Hamilton?
I wanna go back to the roundabout. Where the crossing is, I think that's too close to where they enter and exit the, um, cars from the, from the circle, because they're gonna be, a, roundabout is already a challenge for a lot of people.
Right.
So, someone is gonna panic because of pedestrian trying to cross, and then the car behind them is going to not pay attention, and that's a rare in-rating to happen.
This is a rendering, um, so we'll make sure it's set towards the design standards, and it is that located at a specific location per the design standards, because you don't wanna be, uh, exited and accelerating, um, too fast, but you also don't wanna be decelerating, so it's a, it's happy medium, and there's design standards set. So, this rendering may not portray exactly what the design standards would reflect.
I just commend you on having one lane, 'cause nobody in Bu- uh, Beaufort knows how to drive the two-lane traffic circles.
Yeah.
We heard that last night again, so, thank you.
Two questions on this picture, I would just, 'cause I don't think Ulmer is leaving, and that curb, I just think you've really gotta go there and, and see the traffic that goes in and out, and design accordingly, or your curbs are gonna be crushed.
You're saying, um, at the intersection of Ulmer? This, this is at Bruin?
I know that.
Oh, you're talking about?
This is Bruin, this is Strout, Strout, Strout. Ulmer is down, but Ulmer Brothers is down, Strout.
Gotcha, I'm, I'm gonna understand what you're saying.
And there's a no-through truck traffic ordinance in our town, which they are not supposed to go halfway around and down unless they're getting gas. Lot of gas stations are making lots of money off our trucks, 'cause they still ride through, but I, I just think you gotta watch that, because I've seen people turn, you know, delivery trucks and moving trucks, you're, if it's squared off like that, I just think you've gotta really be cautious.
You're saying the no-through traffic is what you're...
That's, that was just a commercial.
Okay.
I'm talking more on the left, see the white car coming? The white car coming toward us?
Yes.
On the left, that's a dirt road right now, and it's where Ulmer, that's just one, which we love, but he has trucks in and out. He has to come down Burnt Church Road, because he cannot go around to go down Old, Old Town.
Ulmer will lead to the right, not the left.
No, the right is, that's tabby roads to the right.
So which way are we looking at this picture?
Looking toward Alljoy.
From, from the school?
Yeah, so Bruins on the left, 278 straight ahead.
Right.
Strout's to the right.
Exactly.
Okay, well...
But yes, I...
Now I'm confused. I had to...
This is Ulmer.
Because those, so that's, that is supposed to be the sugary in Burnt Church, right there?
It is.
Okay. Okay. Just be aware, and be there and really look at it. Now, other thing, you're talking about wetlands, that property, if you go to your first slide on the right, I'm not sure where you're going into, but during Irma and really hard rainstorms, they called us, but it, I don't know, everyone blamed everyone, that property really took on water.
Which, where are you?
Right on Ulmer Road, right at that right side.
The intersection?
So y'all are aware of that.
Just before the walk was built, and all those modifications were put in there.
Well, I just don't know where they're going into, just, that to me was...
It's pretty wet still.
I would, I would look at it.
Yeah, right there at the school entrance, we pull into the proprietary school, when it's raining, it's walk.
You'd really be out there and look on a rainy event and see, let's make sure we do this right, 'cause guess who gets the calls?
I understand.
Happy to, but, um, I think it looks good, I, I guess, and then the trees that are there are not the trees that are there.
No, this is just the rendering.
I think there are palm trees on MC Riley's side.
I think there are a few on the school side, and then it gets into their...
They were.
So this was, this was a pre-Dominion, um, slide here.
Thank you. Thank you for this, just to keep us aware, and, like I said, I, I know Robbie's here for this and several others, we'll make sure we get, I don't know what goodness does, it's just renderings, but...
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll send more information to staff to make sure on the public information that we have coming up in November.
Okay.
And again, if, uh, if anybody asks questions, there'll be more information to be gained at that meeting.
Thank you.
And all of the adjacent property owners will be notified as well.
That's correct, yeah, we'll have postcards that we'll mail out directly to the, those, and then, uh, it'll be publicly notified.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, everyone else good? Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comment. We'll get the slide up. We have public comment once every council meeting, um, we do ask just for reasonable rules, which we read, it's a three-minute period. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, regardless of whether you're speaking on your own behalf or as an agent for others. You may not donate, yield, transfer, or give any or all of your portion to another person that has been conducted from the podium and directed to the council as a whole and not to the audience. Mindful and respectful, um, always be civil, refrain from commoner behavior that involves disorderly speech or action, name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene or indecent remarks, or disruptive actions. The comments are to be, um, toward the jurisdiction of this town, this is not a time where you can use public comment to promote or advertise awards, businesses, services, goods, or candidates for public office. Any speaker that violates these rules will be ruled out of order, and if once you've been ruled out of order, you will immediately cease and desist. The refusal to do so may be subject to removal, and this is under Section 2-49 of our town code. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to our town clerk, has anyone signed up for public comment?
Robert Jones.
Robert Jones. I didn't see Robert. Robert, did he do an online or in-person?
Online.
Okay, so if you do an online, you do need to be here to read it, but we will contact him, can, what was the subject?
Something he's already emailed about, the power panel.
Of the power panel, okay, okay. Any other? Public comment is over. Good. Communications from Mayor and Council. Anything from over the side, and then I'll look to the left.
I do, I was able to, uh, be at Bluffton High for a poverty awareness, um, month today, and they received a excellent rating, again, um, in terms of school rating, and so did Red Cedar Elementary, and Dr. Corley already left, so congratulations to those two Bluffton schools, and for this being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I do wanna encourage men to also be vigilant about that, because it's not just something that affects, uh, women, it's also something that, um, affects men as well.
Anything, Mayor Protiel?
I just wanted to let everybody know, we have a, for the Arts and Seafood Festival this year, starting on Sunday when we have our kickoff, we're gonna have a little special treat, because my nephews are bringing their big boats over, and we'll have a boat tied up at Calhoun Street that you're more than welcome to walk on and just look around and see how we live, or how the boat works, or whatever.
see how we live or how the boat works or whatever. And we'll also have the, my nephew's boat, the Jesus Lives, at the dock at the Oyster Factory for people to just go on and see. Everybody's always amazed by it, so tell your friends, bring your kids or whatever and come have fun.
Anything over here, guys?
I just want to say that the mayor is planning her service to the community continuing after she finishes her year and she's now on the board of Bluffton Jasper Volunteers in Medicine and we are very grateful for that and we look forward to her service going forward.
Excited to be a part of it. Mr. Hamilton, anything?
Just glad to be here.
You are here, I'm glad all of you are here. It is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Several months ago, WSAV 3, which if any of y'all had TV before, the million channels we get, it was on, used to be on channel three. So that's why they call themselves WSAV 3. There's fun facts. Tina Taya Shaw has always, this has been her passion and WSAV funded and sponsored the mobile mammogram van that came to Buckwalter several months ago and filled it up instantly. So she too says men get breast cancer too and you should have mammograms, not that we want you to have all the tests we have, but do take care of yourself. And on the third day of every month, do a buddy check and it's, I do it the third of every month. If you just think about WSAV 3, third of every month, doesn't hurt to do self-examinations, it saves lives. So we are wearing pink for that reason, that's kind of pink, red, orangey pink.
I missed a memo.
So just it should be, we should be aware of this every month, not just October. Anyway, that's it. We'll move on to important items like formal agenda items and most of y'all are here for. We have several that are second and final reading. If we go through it quick, it's because there were no changes and it was a thorough presentation the month before, which by the way, y'all can see on all of our commissions, you can see the agenda and click on it and see all of the information we see. So the first item, Chris, consideration of an ordinance approving public-private partnership to develop and transfer ownership of town-owned parcels within the Buckwalter Multi-County Industrial Park. This is second and final reading.
Good evening, the mayor and council. As you mentioned, this is the final reading. Couple minor changes that I wanted to bring to your attention. The first is we had a request from the chief to preserve a little bit of the land behind LAC for future expansion of their impound lot. I had a conversation with the developer and he was amenable to this change, so as you see there in purple, that would retain with the town for the future expansion of the impound lot. So there's no issues there between us and the developer. The other item is the legal entity in which he's using to do the development is Parkway Commons 1 LLC. It's a little different than what was originally put in the original contract, but that's, those are the only minor changes and everything else is immaterial, so.
I didn't, I didn't understand the...
Yeah, I wanted you to go back to that slide too.
Yeah, I didn't understand the town request across access.
Yes, so the, so originally right here was going to be a gated fleet lot for the development. We already have our agility course here as well as some space for impounding of vehicles. The request was to retain this back portion right here so that we could future expand the police agility course and impound lot area. So he was agreeable to that.
But parcel B, where the red arrow is, is still gonna be their gated overflow lot.
That's correct.
Because I thought that was important for businesses to have that.
That's right, so we'll retain this northern portion right here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay, is second reading with those changes, it's okay to just make a different motion theory with the...
Yeah, that's fine, no problem.
So is there a motion to approve second and final reading of an ordinance authorizing the town manager to enter into a master agreement with Parkway Commons 1 LLC for the exchange, acceptance, transfer, conveyance, and development of town-owned commercial property within the Buckwalter Place Multi-County Commerce Park so long as the master agreement does not materially differ from what was presented herein?
Second.
Any discussion? When will he, when will we start on this?
So as soon as we sign, he's actually got the surveyor lined up to go out there and start surveying the property.
Any other discussion? All in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Steven, this also is second and final reading. It's a consideration of an ordinance to amend the town of Bluffton Code of Ordinances to add a new section 18-137 providing that a person who violates another with the intent to intimidate another person or persons in whole or in part because of the actual or perceived race, color, creed, religion, ancestry, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, physical or mental disability, or national origin of the other person or persons is guilty of the separate offense of hate intimidation. This is second and final reading and were there any changes to...
No ma'am, I just put a little information here on the background just in case you had any additional questions from last month and if not, then next steps, it would, second reading would be tonight and then if council was good with no changes that have occurred since last reading, this would be the proposed motion. Actually, that should say second.
I think we did a pending doctrine on this.
I thought we did too.
So we can do the same motion, right?
Yes, it just needs to be, where that says first should be second. Sorry.
Any questions? Any questions? I did get several calls from towns around the state similar to ours, eager to see what we're doing and our legislators, hopefully this will help them, especially Weston, push this and give it to Tom.
On the House side.
Yeah, on the Senate side. Anything? Okay, much easier motion than what's on your agenda. Is there a motion to approve on second and final reading the ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the town of Bluffton by adding section 18-137 titled Hate Intimidation? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you for putting so much work into that, Steven. Natalie, consideration of an ordinance amending the town of Bluffton Fiscal Year 2024 budget to provide for the expenditures of certain funds and allocate sources of revenue for the said funds to carry over unspent expenditures and encumbrances from the 2023 budget to the 2024 budget. We do this every year about this time and it is second reading, so.
Good evening and there are no changes from first reading.
Does anyone have questions or any review needed of this? Great. Is there a motion to approve on second reading? Y'all wanted to go back last month. Approve the second reading of an ordinance amending the town of Bluffton. That's okay, he did it too. That's more than a lot. Bluffton Fiscal Year 2024 budget to provide for the expenditures of certain funds, commit additional funds to the capital asset reserve fund, and to allocate sources of revenue for the said funds to carry over unspent expenditures and encumbrances from the 2023 budget to the 2024 budget.
Second.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. How is Kim? Everybody good? We got that up here, good. We have you for two things.
Yes.
First, the approval to authorize a design bill contract with Carolina Recreation and Design LLC for the Oscar Fraser Splash Pad Project, fiscal impact $750,249.39. Anything over a certain amount has to come before council in public to be vetted and voted on. So thank you.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we're excited to bring these two new contracts to you. The first one's for Oscar Fraser Parker Splash Pad. We did a solicitation this past summer to, for a design bill contractor to, to design and construct the Splash Pad. We ended up selecting Carolina Recreation and Design out of Columbia and after an evaluation period. So the, the contract now is for design, construction, and construction of the Splash Pad. It is located just to the south of the restroom building of the pavilion and it consists of approximately 2,200 square feet of a Splash Pad with 23 spray features including piping, water-wise controller, poured-in-place rubber surf, rubber surfacing. There's a couple images in here of the Splash Pad that came out of this design bill proposal. That, that circular bollard on the left of this slide is an activator, so this is something that has to be manually activated by people that come to the Splash Pad. So it's not on 24/7, it just comes on and this will automatically turn off after 15, 20 minutes, whatever. So there's lots of controls built into the system so to kind of preserve water and energy. These are just images, you can see the water buckets for the palm trees, there's bell showers, there's a water curtain, there's water cannons, those kinds of things. We're excited about the design of this project. This is an aerial view that shows the surfacing a bit. There is gonna be different colored surfacing, it's not just a concrete pad, gray-colored pad, there'll be this rubberized material that has images, the crab image in it and different patterns. Just another image, close-up of that. That, that feature in the foreground here is a water table, that's for younger kids who are a little bit more timid and don't want to get involved in the big spray features. This is something where they can play with the water outside of being, of all the splashing So we're recommending to town council to execute a contract for design services for the Splash Pad project with Carolina Recreation and Design. The proposal is for $655,231.45 and we're asking for a 15% contingency on that for a total fiscal impact of $750,249.39. This project, we have projected in the budget $800,000 for construction and $70,000 for design, so this is well within that budget that we have appropriated for this.
Sir, any question?
Yes. I got a question.
Do you want to finish your, do you want to finish your next step?
Well, the next step is really have a kickoff meeting. We're hoping to execute the contract, have a kickoff meeting this month and start the final design of this project and then get in the fabrication of materials and we hope to have it under construction this spring and open in the summer.
Mr. Hamilton, any question?
Did you see how much money you costing us? Are you happy?
Did you not hear what he said? It actually came in under budget, which is always a good thing.
Would you like it?
I do.
Was that your question?
That was my, well, I wanted, I really, I really want Bridget to know that this is a great asset for, for our community and her idea and her, I guess her resilience to make sure it happened, I appreciate that. I mean, this, this, this is gonna be a great asset to the town, yeah.
Agreed.
My question is somewhere along the steps, planning steps of this or whatever in a meeting somewhere, there was an option to have this system that retained the water?
Yes.
Or an option where you just have a high water bill every month? Which one is this?
This is a recirculating system. We went through a process, Mark, he was in here, he did an analysis of how much water is used with a flow-through system or goes right into the sewer or a recirculating system and the costs associated with how much water is utilized consumption and then also the cost for impact fees upfront on that and it's a serious amount of money. So we started out thinking we were gonna do a flow-through system on this project, but we, we kind of made, changed course after going through that process to go to a recirc...
That's what I was gonna encourage you to do, so I'm glad you saw the same thing that I saw. This is, this is much better.
And that's typical for most of them, they do have the, the recirculation method, but great job on the design. I love that you all took the feedback of adding like the little crab features and the other natural things and the little palm trees in there are really nice. My question is, I saw the inclusion on the projected image there of, looked like someone in a wheelchair. This, will the Splash Pad be ADA compliant?
It's all flush, it's all flush. I mean, it's draining towards a drain in the center, but it's all flushed and meets ADA requirements.
Anything else, Dan?
Um, great.
Yeah.
Well, I have to ask one question. So maintenance for all this, I always ask really for more of the public, what do we put in, like we have to maintain the things we build, do we have that projected in budgets? The maintenance of...
Yes, we're gonna have to put in operation budget for the next coming years, this will be in the next fiscal year for the maintenance of this. We have done analysis of what that is and know what that is now, but we don't have it in this current year's budget, but we have, we'll have to put it in next year's budget.
Oh, and I remember saying the leadership class put the workout benches there, which I use a lot, where are we relocating those or are we building this around that?
No, this is gonna take out those, those exercise stations, but they are gonna be reinstalled around the perimeter of the trail that goes around the park, mainly in the shaded areas and the western and southern portions.
And I love the swings there, I saw it the other day running, so, okay. Anything else? If not, there'll be a motion to, do you have a, do we have a motion? I can read it. Is there a motion to authorize a design bill contract with Carolina Recreation and Design LLC for the Oscar Fraser Splash Pad Project, fiscal impact $750,249.39? Is there a second? Any discussion? Is that okay? Okay. All in favor state by saying aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Next, we have you up still. To authorize an amendment to the contract 2023-42 with NIX Construction for construction and phase-two development, New Riverside Barn Project, $10,903,500, well, we said we were gonna do it all at once, so we're doing it. It just hurt my throat, $573. We bonded and we have the money in the bank, right? So we've gotta spend it. Pat, you're up.
All right, just background, you bought the property in 2018, almost 2019, the end of 2018. In, in October of 2020, we came with, to you with a master plan, we started working on phase-one site development, construction drawings after that was approved. So in December 2022, we signed a contract or we, you approved a contract for JS Construction to do phase-one infrastructure and that's basically the roads, parking, trails, storm drainage, and utility extensions. So I don't know if you've been out there lately, but you're starting to really see the roads coming in and the, and the trails coming in, so take a look at it, it's really starting to look like a park a little bit. But then the next step, of course, is phase-two construction and that's what we're here for today. Back this spring, we did a RFQ solicitation and the man, the town manager executed a contract, a construction manager at risk contract with NIX Construction to do pre-designed services and guaranteed maximum, to come up with a guaranteed maximum price for the project. The phase-two construction includes the renovation and the expansion of the barn, restroom buildings, destination playground, shelters, landscape, hardscape, signage, site furnishings and lighting. It's a lot of things. This is the plan that you saw at the, at the construction, initial construction meeting. And I don't know if you want to go through this, you know it pretty well, I don't think you really need to know much more than this. This is the barn elevation. The center portion of this, this perspective is the original barn, we're adding some clear story light windows across the top in front of the shed roof, the shed roof expansion off the front, which has the restroom buildings, a foyer and a hallway and storage areas. There's a shed roof portion off the back, you can see on this rendering, it's a covered porch, open covered porch, and then the building to the left on the rendering is a separate kind of kitchen, warming kitchen, storage area for the, for the buildings. This is site plan for that, the only thing this shows really is that there is, that we haven't discussed much, is there is a courtyard off of the right side of the building that can be used as a breakout space or an event space that can accommodate about 60 people outside. The actual inside space can accommodate 110 people with, with round tables and chairs and 180 people if it's just chairs for like a town council meeting type of thing, a public meeting. Also on this rendering shows on the upper right of the barn is, is the kind of oyster cookout area, fire pit area, so that's a separate area that's kind of downslope from the barn down in a grove of trees. This is a plan view rendering of the playground. I won't go through all this unless you ask me to, I have a couple of images of this, but this is a, a two-acre playground and normally our playgrounds are 60 by 40 at the most and this is a much larger playground, has a lot of different elements for a lot of different age groups, people with disabilities included, but it's just, it's really... age groups, people with disabilities included, but it's just, it's really an exciting playground, I believe. It's going to be a tremendous asset to this area.
And all of the equipment stuff is included in this contract?
Yes. Here's a couple of bird's eye perspectives. That's that, that image, that image in the bottom is the owl. It's a sculptural element, the element that's more of a top place structure. There's shade, there's shade umbrellas in here. That whole section with the owl is a two to five foot, a two to five year old play area. There's other areas that are five to 12 and there's a agility sections, there's a misting station, there's a zip line, there's two shelters in this playground and it's all spread around a spine pathway that, and there's a mounted area and we're really excited about the, how this turned out. It's nature blending materials. It's mostly wood in design, so we think it's going to fit into the landscape well.
Pat, I take it the zip line is close to the ground?
Yes, yes, yes. It doesn't show up well in this rendering. It's in the right-hand side where you see that tan color on this image. There's one line going through there, but you can't pick it up, but no, it's close to the ground. It's not, it's not up in the trees.
I think what Councilman Wood was really wanting to ask is is it safe for him to use?
I think so. For all ages. Don't have a real fancy rendering of the restroom building, but there's two buildings, a men's and a women's restroom with a trellis in between. This is one of the first things that's going to be built out there. And then this is the schedule that was presented by Nick's Construction. They're here tonight if you have any particular questions of them. It's pretty front loaded in terms of most of the site development, the pavilions, the restroom building, a lot of the site development for the playground will be in that first year. The thing that kind of projects it out beyond the first year really is, is the barn element and then the landscaping associated with the barn at the end. So there is going to be at the end of this year, quite a bit of this kind of, you know, you'll be able to see what this park is going to be like, so. So we're here tonight to kind of ask you to authorize the town manager to execute a contract with Nick's Construction for a guaranteed maximum price of $10,903,573. And as you know, this one, we're not asking for a contingency on this one because this is a guaranteed maximum price project. So you have some protection about increases in price on this particular project as opposed to other ones that we do. We always have change orders that we, this is with a whole ball wax and the contract manager at risk is kind of responsible for managing the entire construction. I mean, our project manager, Brian Osborne is here. He's the project manager for this project. He'll be watching after this, but this is primarily on the contractor to deliver it within a two-year frame, timeframe within the budget we, he's proposing here with this contract.
Question.
If you could put it back on the schedule one time?
Yeah. Do we have, are you finished?
No, I can, we can-
No, but let me, I just wanted to jump to questions because they were kind of going back and forth.
I'm finished if you want me to be finished.
Do you have a question?
Me? Yeah, I was, I was just looking at the timeline here.
It's a two-year schedule, basically, starting in November.
But a ton will be done in the next eight months, the way I'm seeing it.
By October 24, everything will be done except the barn.
I was looking in the wrong column. I said, how is he going to do all that that fast? I see it now when I was looking at it.
Well, he's been working on this for probably four or five months now since we signed the original contract. This is an amendment to his existing contract would be this-
Any questions, Mr. Hamilton?
Can you show me the parkings?
The what?
The parking areas.
Okay. This is probably the best image. If you see the letter B and the letter J on this, on either side of the barn, there's a spine of parking that goes to the right or the east of the barn, and that has actually some overflow parking at the very end. It doesn't show up well in this image, but that letter C on this, this rendering is actually an overflow parking area on grass. There is a gravel driveline that goes over there that is, accommodates quite a few cars.
And the entrance to go in there is B, right where that B is?
Yeah, B is, there's, there's parking all on that side of New Riverside Drive and then that letter C in the middle there, that's the middle of a kind of an overflow parking area on grass.
Do we have an exact count of what that, that parking count is?
I'd have to get you those numbers. I will get you those numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head.
About bicycle parking?
We'll have bicycle parking down more towards the-
As long as we have it.
The playground, yes.
I don't know if anybody's been there. I've been there twice and it's shaped, shaped out, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Wood? No. I just, I'm calling.
That was it. I just, I've been in there, it's shaped out. Low Pat's been in there, some of the shaping to the right and then taking on down to where E is, you can, you can drive down in there and see some of it.
Mr. Hamilton, question?
What about the, the interior of the barn?
Interior of the barn? It's going to be finished off, I mean, right now it's all exposed beams, so there will be walls placed in there, but the beams will still be exposed, but there'll be siding in between those. It's going to be definitely a nicer finish than what it is right now, and I think the big help, and it'll be set up for all kinds of functions and we'll have plenty of IT material. I think I might get Brian to add some information to this.
Who is Brian? I didn't see Brian.
You want to give a description of the inside?
You've got to come forward, Brian. Sorry. I knew you were hiding back there.
Just wanted to put me on the spot.
I think he did.
I mean, the interiors, the barn's done by Coradkins. It's, to make a simple comment, it's all metal bluffish.
I think it's a pretty cool barn the way it looks. For those of these people who work on a farm, they'd understand what a real barn looked like.
It's only supposed to be a barn on the outside. Inside is supposed to be, it's supposed to be user friendly, so when, whenever you get a better description of the interior, please let me know.
Okay. So it's going to be kind of like you did in here?
Yes, yeah.
Right.
Any other questions?
When we get, do you want to, when we get done, do you want to grab a set of the plans that you have and council can look at it after the meeting?
I think just after the meeting is fine, or?
Sure.
So any other questions? I, one final on your schedule and you have to go back to it. Everything but the barn was complete by October 24. Will all of that open as it's completed? Are we still going to close it off and have these kids like sad at the gates? When are we going to open this up for these families?
Well, that's going to be somewhat up to our contractor. I mean, if there's a way to cordon off the barn and the associated area and not have them get in the way of construction, that's a possibility.
And I'm looking at-
But I don't think that's what they prefer. They'd prefer to finish the project and then, then let, let people in.
You need, you're going to have like a candy store there and there were, and they're going to be there like Walmart Christmas sale.
Oh, you guys pointing at-
He is pointing at, he, he was blocking you too.
So I'm Joe Nix with Nick's Construction. I'm very pleased to be here this evening. I've been working on this with Pat and Brian for several months. So one of the more difficult parts to this project, because it is, it's a lot of acreage. The playground is very unique. It's, it's going to be the biggest playground we've ever done anywhere around. So the whole project is very epic. But for me as a builder, it's how do you finish it? You know, what do you start? What do you finish? Because there's so many moving parts. So the vision of what I have in mind, and when I did the schedule, which we sort of built the cash flow around the schedule for budgeting purpose and guaranteeing the price and so forth and so on, is, is basically to try to get the park open as soon as possible. Don't think we want to hold the park hostage because we're working on a barn. The barn in and of itself is, it is a piece of work. It's going to be beautiful, very durable, low maintenance, a lot, a lot of materials is going to last a long time, so. But it is very, I'm going to bluffish in the sense that it's, it's, there's no cheap stuff in the barn. It's going to be beautiful. It's going to be a wedding venue, like the pictures are going to be incredible, but it takes time. So what I'm envisioning and what the schedule is that you have is we will develop the site as soon as possible, which Low Pat is already doing a lot of work. He's obviously a subcontractor to us so that we have a continuity in what he's doing and what we're doing. It's to try to get the playground built, get, the playground gets finished, you've got to have the restroom building for the playground. They go hand in hand. So we finish the trails and everything, sidewalks, we get the wells in, we get the overall landscaping in, we finish the restrooms, we finish the playground, boom, we open it.
Okay.
Well, there you go. That's all you had to say.
We cordon off the barn, so it becomes a job site within a site.
Right. Perfect.
And then we try to, I mean, obviously it'd be great if we could finish it all at one time and open it, but this, the sooner I can give the keys to the town, the better I'll sleep.
Thank you. That's all you had to say. That, that will be nice. That's a long time from park to barn, so that's wonderful, Joe, and thank you for taking this on. Anything else? I think Ms. Fraser had her hand up.
I just had a comment to say, I know that our aim would be to have it completed as soon as possible, but it's always too advisable to be cognizant, like we don't want to have a liability in a sense of opening it while they're still doing other things and having people expose the potential dangers.
He seems okay.
He might, but I'm just saying for us, I'd rather it's safety first.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Tumer?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Looks good to me.
Anything else? If not, is there a motion to approve authorizing the town manager to amend the New Riverside Barn Park Construction Manager at Risk contract with Nick's Construction Company, Inc. with a fiscal impact of $10,903,573? Is there a second? Any discussion? I, I agree that we have to worry about safety, but this is really going to be a fabulous project. I'm so excited. Any other discussion? All in favor, state of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Number six, under formal items, considerations of accommodations tax advisory committee funding recommendations for the quarter ending June 30th, 2023. Natalie, you were up and I see Christie's here. Thank you for being here, Christie.
Oh, there you are. Hello.
Did you bring us any snacks?
It did not.
Okay, so you have, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for quarter ending June 30th, 23. This was our largest number of applications and also the largest amount that has been requested. So we've hit a couple milestones. There were seven applications with requesting seven, $678,406. ATAC has recommended $609,359.65. Currently looking at state, there is $432,295 available for distribution for this quarter. And I provided an overview of a couple different things, what has been requested by each of the applicants, what's been recommended by ATAC in the green, and then the results of the scoring that each of the members do and what that would look like against what's been requested, and then a couple options if you want to evaluate those to remain within the available amount. And I will also have these as guides as we go through each of the applications for review.
Before we get started on this, another really just several new people in the audience and I don't know who's watching, but this came to us last month with wonderful recommendations from the committee. We're all human and we all make mistakes, but numbers that council was told was not the same number accommodations tax was told, and I think it led to a bigger discussion, which I'd like to get thoughts of before we move on, because I think we all have some recusals with different ones. So the reason we sent it back was because I wanted to make sure Christie and her group were aware of the same thing we were aware of, and, and that was the sole purpose, and you made, you were fine with your recommendation, at least it gave you the ability to say, whoa, you know, I didn't realize that or whatever. So I really appreciate y'all meeting, whatever you decided, it was fine, but at least we all knew the same thing rather than knowing different numbers at the time. But what are, I guess the question is, let's just make sure that it's back to our accommodations tax commission of what is available, which I think we're all on the same page now, we'll all know what's available to spend, and what does council think as a whole of spending within our limits or spending more than what we have currently? And I think that's something our staff needs to know and we can discuss it, we can discuss it publicly. I think it would help accommodate, it'll help Christie when she is at her next meeting. So I don't think any of us have talked really as a whole about this, so I thought it would be good to discuss that before we get into these, these things. So a general overall feeling of how you feel about accommodations money spending within our means or looking out into other quarters, so.
Can I make a comment before y'all start just talking?
Quick comment, pop up.
Okay. So one of the suggestions that came from our meeting was that-
We were given the wrong budget. We all know that. So one of the suggestions is, yes, what was given or recommended is more than what the state ATAC's money is, but they have, everybody has two years to spend this money. So one of the suggestions was, is it possible that we can take it from future? Because some of the things hasn't been used, some of the things are coming up at two years and it'll get refunded back into, or replenished back into the budget. So that was one of the suggestions. And I've watched, watched, I think I heard, no, I was, no, no, you're fine, because I, we were all doing other things. Okay. We'll take that as a consideration. Thank you.
So how are you going to do this?
Done. Thank you, Christie, for that. So I think going forward, when it comes to an instance like this, it's different opposed to if the funding amount availability had been given and the recommendation from the committee would have reflected that information accurately. I think the issue here that, that is being addressed is the fact that what the wrong number being given, the recommendations were based on that. So the applicants who came forward heard a recommendation amount based off of the information they were given. So I just think it's going forward, how do we ensure that that doesn't happen in the sense of that having that accurate information kind of helps the committee as they make their determinations and we don't make people feel punitive in a sense of whether it's a, you have to come back and like do, have a do-over or whatever, just to keep it, you know, clear on, on how we're governing and handling things. But in the recommendation amount, I definitely think it's something in knowing that ATAC has changed and it's not like those who get the recommendation are automatically, you know, going to get it. Council has to prove it, but they still don't get those funds like right out the door from approval. And it still is reimbursement based after going through that process of ATAC where you still have to check, you know, all of that information and verify that what you said the spend was going to be is being done. So to the general public hearing that, there is no convolution in terms of how ATAC handles funding, and I think our finance department has always been top-notch in the sense of ensuring that funds have been allocated appropriately and have not been misappropriated despite what some may try to say or think.
And, and this is nothing against anybody. We're, we are all human. I mean, we all make mistakes and honestly, if it wasn't a question at one of my agenda meetings, I might not have known it was just a question of it. So it really is, let's take this forward, we're going to handle this, but what are our faults? And still accommodations tax, y'all can still do it ever, but I don't want anyone to be blindsided if you have an elected body that feels one way, and at least, and like again, it helps you as a chair. Did you have a thought on the question? And then we'll get to these things, our, our reason that's up.
My thought is, I just want to say it just the way it happened. Human error occurred as soon as we found out, which was the next week or whatever it was, that the amount given to the ATAC committee was incorrect. Therefore, their awards were, were different than if they had had the right information. If they'd have known there was $432,000 in their two award, the awards that they recommended would have looked a lot different. I don't know what they had looked like, but they would have been different. I don't know what they had looked like, but they would have been different than what they are now, the last we got. I totally support us sending it back to you guys, asking y'all to meet again with the proper numbers so that you were properly informed. I think that was the smartest, open thing that we possibly could. It was a mistake on our staff part. We didn't do it, but we didn't want to act like we knew about it or something and have people accuse us of showing favoritism or whatever. I also do not believe personally that we should mortgage future monies before we get them. I think ATAC's money should go out as it comes in, but not promises made for six months down the road or a year down the road, because that would hurt the new applicants that are coming in, if you understand what I'm saying. I don't think business, you ever borrow money to give money away.
So, you'd like to keep the spending within the current?
Absolutely.
Okay. That is the question. Thoughts on this side?
When we have a difference in understanding with the boards or commissions that this council elect, I think when we get to a place where we have that misunderstanding, there should be some phone calls made before you have a meeting, because you're trying to figure things out on the fly. And if phone calls were made and wrong information was given, that's one thing, but if you were giving the knowledge of how you, those funds were supposed to be spent and why it came back, it started looking like it was counsel against this committee, and that didn't feel good, and it still doesn't feel good. And I don't like the fact that we sitting here today trying to clean it up by not cleaning it up. You know, I don't like making people feel like they get a pass when they shouldn't. If you're going to, the only way to correct a problem is to admit there is a problem and admit that we can fix it because we accept the fact that something went wrong and we want to do the right thing by fixing it. My saying is, when you know better, you do better. So, let's not pacify this. Let's deal with it head-on, and let, so it won't happen again. Once we get to a place of working together and everybody has the same information at the same time, we can do better, and we will do better, but we can't just pretend it didn't happen. Got to fix it.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. So, during the budget period last year, the local ATAC's dollar number kept growing substantially. And it turned out that in the last five years, from what I've understood from staff, that the only dollars allocated for ATAC were the state ATAC's dollars for five years. So, the budget item for the local ATAC, again, was suggested to council, and council accepted the suggestion and voted to move that money over to its own fund, and it can be utilized for CIP projects and things like that that are based, you know, in tourism base, which is historically what we've always done. I agree with the ATAC's committee recommendations as a whole. I personally agreed with the request, and you, the ATAC's committee did it twice, they voted twice on it unanimously. So, I think the goal for me is to see that the requests are honored where we can. The problem is, we've never experienced two large requests of that magnitude ever, which in the number of requests tied in with that upset the apple cart for the state ATAC's dollars available to us. I think what we need to do is, and you, I talked to Natalie today, you've already received quite a few requests for the next go-round, correct?
That's correct.
So, we have a budget funding problem to reach with the numbers that have been presented to us. I think what will happen is, if we can reduce some of these, I personally would like to give the majority of them the 100%. That would be me. We can go through it line by line. And two of the larger ones are not even ready really to receive the money right now. We've got a case, again, if you don't use it, you lose it within two years. I think that needs to be revisited by council at some point, maybe at the, you know, later in the year when we do our meeting, and what is it called? The...
Strategic workshop.
Thank you, strategic workshop. So, anyway, that can be addressed then, but, so what I'm trying to say is, right this moment, with the people that are coming in now and the dollars that are already, they're being requested, we need to lower the numbers, however, we do that as a committee, council, and then that buys us time to get into the budget process, which we will be doing later in the year, you know, come January. And at that point, we can do a revisit and look at the local ATAC's dollars in conjunction with the state ATAC's dollars, and that will help council determine how we need the budget for future ATAC's requests going forward. That's the thought, so.
Question? And then we can go back and discuss everything. I wrote down Christie's thought, and I did, I heard a couple of things that night that I wrote notes on, because I wanted to bring up. When do we realize, do we ever have a running total of when the two-year timeframe is up on recommendations that are voted on by council?
We do. We do. So, because it's quarterly, so things tend to fall off, and so it's reevaluated on what applications are still outstanding that have not been fully reimbursed, and if we've gotten all of the information from them, and then we will go and lapse those funds and put them back into the available.
I think that would be something good for us to see, kind of a rolling somehow like two years ago. I'm curious what, that wasn't in the number that was given to us or the second time to ATAC, and where that is and what, because I'd have no idea. It could be 100,000, it could be 10,000. So, it would be good to have. Also, and again, this could be a strategic plan to discuss, I read through what you were reading through, Christie, at that meeting, and I do think we need to provide what's being spent local and state to accommodations tax, to let them know. And I told Chris, it could be, you know, under a consent, it could be an FYI, but they need to touch, I'm only one-fifth here, but I feel that commission needs to touch and at least give their thoughts on everything we request if it goes another way, and we have that final say. So, I do think good has come from this, because I would have never thought about it. So, all of that saying, I agree, I don't like spending more than we have, and I said this when I suggested, we suggested going back, don't think we're going to have money next time, guys. There are people finally coming forward. I'm so proud of the groups that have never asked for money, and they're really understanding what we can spend money on too, because I think some people think we just can spend it on everything, but we can't. But I just love to see the new groups coming forward. So, we can't count on that anymore, and I do think we need to look at where we see that local can help when really good, all events are good, but if it starts to be kind of an issue, so. I think I heard, I didn't, I think I heard at least three, maybe four, say, maybe all of us, that we really don't want to spend more than what you're giving each quarter. I think I heard that, but...
You did with me.
Okay. So, if you can take that back, and Christie's here. So, thank you. But reason I wanted to do this is because we all are busy, and I think you want a council that's involved, and we are, this little town is growing, but we're all small and now I'm on them, and, you know, they get the busy people to do busy things. There's several areas where I think a few of us have to recuse ourselves, so I wanted to talk about that generally, because I didn't want it to appear like I was representing something I'm going to have to recuse myself on. So, saying all that, how do y'all want to, let's look at the list, saying all that. I know that the committee referred everything back to us, which was a good dollar amount over what the allocated funds were, and I heard councilman would say he'd talk to y'all, so I don't know what that conversation was about. How do y'all want to proceed?
Can I make a quick suggestion? Some of these have already been completed.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to move that with Dan. Dan, you had mentioned there's some that are in the works that have already been done. The Roots and River's been done. I know Christmas is going to be here before the next one, and I'm super excited about different communities there. Arts and Seafood Fest is coming before us, Bike Bluffton, if it hadn't been done, it's about to be done.
And CCA's been done.
CCA, I didn't read, yes.
I would recommend, Mayor, that, again, following the recommendations of the ATAC's committee, the Boys and Girls Club, Arts and Seafood, Coastal Conservation, Blackwoodie, and the Congregation Bethiam, I would say that we follow the recommendation of the dollar values that the ATAC's committee voted for, and then the Campbell Chapel Church and the Gola Cultural Heritage Center, they're not ready yet to receive all the monies they've requested, but they could receive some funding. AME has not applied for a permit yet, and the Gola Culture Center is further down the road in construction. They're not ready yet. So, I think we could still take care of all the ones in the middle, take the two large ones, give them some money, and then let them come back at a later date and follow up on their request that they're trying to solve to honor the request of, or the voting of the ATAC's committee.
And to follow you, these are all paid on receipt. All of the money that goes through ATAC's paid on receipt. We don't write checks the day after we vote on this, so it's paid on receipt for the request that's been made, so.
Okay.
So, let's, why don't we go through the active ones? I need to recuse myself from two. One, because my daughter sits on a board, and I've read the ethics language up and back and forward and talked to Terry, so I need to recuse myself from Blackwoodie. I was on the Boys and Girls Club Advisory Board about 15 years ago, but we haven't had a meeting in about that long. Am I still on their advisory board? May as well just be careful and recuse myself of that, too.
If it hasn't been a meeting in 15 years, you're probably okay, but being careful's never a problem.
But I say I'm on it, so.
And I'm on Arts and Seafood Festival, so.
Let's do, okay, congregation, let's go here, Congregation Bethiam. Does anyone have a conflict with that group?
No.
Okay. There's a mount requested of 6,000. I don't understand the up to, that was new for me, I never had seen that before. The mount recommended was up to 6,000, so.
And it's in red, so I have a question.
Yes. So, let's talk about that one first. Yes.
Okay. So, the reason why it is in red is to call out that it was recommended at the up to amount. When we review, when the committee reviewed their budget that was submitted, there was conversation on security, and so there wasn't security submitted in the budget. The committee recommended that they consider security, and so that was the up to 6,000 that came from the committee.
Or security.
Do include security.
Okay, I see. I got to go, I got to go with just the chair, but I know the applicants are here as well, so let me get Bridget to ask her a question, and maybe you can help answer it, but Christie, you may as well come on up here.
But my question was, but it doesn't, that red doesn't indicate that they were asking for funding that ATAC couldn't cover?
So, anything that does come for reimbursement, we review it as staff, we consider if it's eligible. If it is eligible, then it is reimbursed and within their project guidelines. So, it was only called out in red as, to note that it's not a straight 6,000, it was an up to 6,000 that was recommended by the committee.
And that reason was because when we saw their budget, there was a lot of things in there that is not usable in the ATAC. Eligible, sorry.
So, with us thinking about this, we still reserve the 6,000? I mean, if we approve it, then, I mean, what is the recommendation? Are you recommending that we award vote on 6,000?
Out on the baseline, of course.
Or another number?
So, according, I don't have their budget here in front of me.
And maybe it clears things up.
They did send an updated budget when we had our second meeting, and we didn't go line by line when we did those.
But you can, we can pay on receipt up to 6,000 to this applicant, and if it's 6,000 worth of receipts that are verified through, I guess, finance, then they are comforted in knowing they have that amount that they can sit with you and say, does this qualify? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And that was the recommendation of ATAC's committee.
Okay. And then the security also would be coming out of the police fund because, right, then we're going to, if it's funded by ATAC, then that would be taken care of, so that actually wouldn't be part of that 6,000. Great. Okay. So, amount requested 6,000, amount recommended up to 6,000. Is there a motion to grant the Congregation Bethiam up to 6,000 in tourism-related eligible expenses in support of the Town of Bluffton Hanukkah Celebration Project as presented in the staff report breakdown?
Don't make that motion.
There's second? He did second. Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Is there anyone on the dais that would have a conflict with the Coastal Conservation Association? They've been requested 10,000, they've been recommended 10,000. Is there any discussion on that? Is there a motion then to accept the recommendation of 10,000 to the Coastal Conservation Association? Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Next, we have what's been done. Blackwoodie. Can I make, can I do this, or do I have to pass this to?
No, you can make it, you just can't vote. You can, I mean, you can carry the votes.
You should have no role in it, Mayor.
And don't even say amount recommended.
Really?
Okay. So, Blackwoodie Roots Center.
Where's it at?
It's right here, or right there. No, no, it's right here. And they requested and they recommended.
Okay, is there a motion to award Blackwoodie Roots and River Festival's 10,836?
It's a move.
I'm recusing myself from this.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, y'all can't talk.
Not talking, I'm not saying a word.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's three with two recusals. Sorry, y'all, but I think it gets across. Bluffton Boys and Girls Club, you may as well do that one, too.
Is there a motion to award Bluffton Boys and Girls Club 21,650? It's a move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is Art and Seafood Festival. Are there any recusals for Arts and Seafood Festival?
Aye.
Just you? Okay. Arts and Seafood Festival, amount requested was 80,000, amount recommended was 80,000. Any discussion on this item?
It's a move.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the commission of 80,000?
It's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. I have got to recuse myself on Bluffton Gola Cultural Heritage Center, and I'm guessing, Bridget, you have to, so we can do that one. And then on Campbell, are you recusing yourself on that? Fred would have to recuse himself on that, and what are the thoughts, what are your thoughts, Natalie, that's remaining?
To reduce them, and Natalie can help me with this one. I'm thinking that the 175,000 on that one.
Which one?
Gola Cultural Heritage Center. They'll have to come back.
I cannot, I can't.
So, that's the number we're going to go with, I guess, in this mass confusion?
If you don't, we won't have enough money.
Right. Is there a motion to award the Bluffton Gola Cultural Heritage 175,000?
Is that with the option that they can come back, right? Is that with the option that they can come back, right? It's a move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And on these that are coming back, I know in some of the reports it said they weren't, but y'all know that now. You know that by this, great. Next, we have Campbell Chapel Community Development.
Mr. Wilby, have thoughts?
I would recommend the number for that one, um, it's an odd number, but I would just round it out to 95,000, and I think these numbers, are you keeping up with them?
I am.
Do you think they match? Do they work?
I'm, yep.
Okay.
That's not, uh, where's option? Hold on a second, let me... So, so option A, Natalie, would show that we would have enough to award them 130,000.
Um, not with the recent recommendations.
Even with the 175, see right here?
Yeah, I do see it.
All of them would be the same. The only shortfall that I see on here would be the first one we did, the Bethyam, where we gave 6,000.
And, yes, and so that's where the shortfall would come in, so...
So we would have a, we would have a, about a 5,000?
It comes up to 2,065.
2,065, but wouldn't we have a surplus of 29,075?
I'm not...
Let's see. So, it would, oh, you're right, so we're about 3,000?
Yes, yes. Because of the fully fund for the celebration.
So, so we could do, um, 127 to Campbell and still not go over what we have on hand and probably have enough for a box of popcorns.
Are we, does that keep us in our budget?
Does that make sense to y'all?
Very good.
127, okay.
127, eight, let's just go 127.
127, so...
Two boxes popcorns.
So there's a suggestion at the dais to recommend 127,000 to Campbell Chapel Community Development with the ability for them to come back.
They are coming back, they can add that surplus to the other...
Okay.
And Fred, you have refused yourself on this one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve $127,000 as a recommendation, well, as a recommendation from Campbell Chapel Community Development?
It's a move.
Your second. Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank, Christie, thank you, and thank you, we'll say. We try to make, you know, for years, we begged people to come, and now look, we catch the tail of the dog, and, but I love it, and may we have even more. I love it being difficult, because it means a lot of people want to come and be part of our town, so, okay. So, next we have item seven, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of a certain real property owned by the Town of Bluffton to Workforce State of Mind located at 1095 May River Road and consisting of 1.78 acres, more or less, identified as Beaufort County Tax Map Number, is listed on the agenda, and authorizing the execution and recording of associated documents is the first reading. Let him talk. No, he left it, okay, okay.
Robert?
Okay.
You're up. Ready? Okay, so this is first reading, as you mentioned, for the conveyance of property located at 1095 May River Road. Go through a little bit of background information, but this is the affordable housing development that we are partnering with, with Workforce State of Mind. Just to remind everyone where the property is, there's the intersection of Buck Island Road there, May River Road, that subject property, that yellow flag shape. Just another perspective of where that's located in relationship to the historic district, the Old Town and Bluffton Park. Just again, some more information on the acreage there and the property. More information here. Like I said, back in 2018, Town Council approved the resolution to acquire the property at this location, and that was for future, again, the purpose was for future affordable housing. Continuing forward, we went through a request for proposals for the redevelopment of the housing, with this as one of the sites. Ultimately, we moved forward with an agreement for the development of the homes there with Workforce State of Mind LLC, and as part of that agreement, ultimately, there will be the conveyance of the property to the developer. What we're proposing now is to move forward with first reading. They are going through the permitting process as we speak, gone through the town review, and right now, they're going through all the outside agency reviews. That is taking some time. They do need to receive DEHEC approval, SCDOT approval, as well as BJWSA. We don't envision any changes to the develop, to the site layout that you've seen, or moving that forward. Again, we're just going, waiting for time to get all those approvals in place. Once those approvals are all in place and they have an approved development plan, at that point, we will come back before you for a second and final reading to convey the property to the developer. And also, in that agreement that we have, there are checks and balances in place that should something change, that the town will own and retain all of the approved plans for the housing to be able to move that forward. And again, right now, we're just moving through our land acquisition policy manual as far as the next steps. This is first reading. I can't, right now, I will also tell you, it is for 12 homes. Those homes are, will be for 60% and also 80% AMI of, for residents. There will be deed restrictions for 30 years for those homes, and we will work through with the developer as far as what those covenants will be, restrictive covenants, moving forward. Tonight, what we are asking is that you all take one of the following actions, either approve first reading of this ordinance, approve first reading with amendments, or deny first Next steps, like I said, we're still going through that permitting process for that layout. They are working through all of those outside agency approvals. Following that, we will go through the preparation of the deed and the restrictions, and that will be part of the ordinance that you all will review at second reading, and that will move forward, and ultimately, they will go and record those associated documents, and ultimately, we'll go through a closing, and then we will, they will start building. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or I have a motion on the...
Questions, Council? You do, Mr. Hamilton?
If the sky fall down and they don't get these approvals, what happens?
Well, I don't envision that happening, but I guess that's always an option. If they don't receive approvals, they'd have to revise plans to meet whatever either BJWSA or DEHEC's requirements are. I never, I would hate to say I never say never, but I've never experienced a situation where an outside agency has ultimately denied an application. There may be some revisions requested. I will say, in this instance, they have had preliminary reviews with all of the agencies, and they've made it come, you know, they've made adjustments and moved forward. Worst, worst-case scenario, they go back to the drawing board and have to redesign.
Next question.
But I don't envision that happening.
Is it, is it not safe for us to have these covenants in place already?
At first reading? I suppose you could hold off on first reading and wait until you have some drafted covenants to review. They will be part of that final second, second reading in the ordinance before they can...
It will be part, okay.
Yes, that will be part of that.
All right, I'm good with that.
They will be recorded prior to the, they'll be recorded prior to the property being transferred.
Okay. The goal with this is we wanted to make sure, because it takes two readings, that we, whenever, if that permit's come tomorrow, knock on wood, let's hope it happens, that we wouldn't have to schedule an extra meeting or try to bring this back over two months to get it done. We don't want to delay the process at all.
Right.
Any other questions? Anything from this side? Mr. Ford, anything?
Only thing, and for clarity, so if, if the sky did fall, and things didn't go forth the way we'd all hoped, would we still have ownership of the land?
Yes, and the plans as they've been completed to date.
There we go.
So, so basically, we're just taking a 30-day window out so that when they're ready, if we're not, if they're not ready next month, it won't be on the agenda.
Correct.
So we can skip a month, or two, or five, if needed, to, while they're working on getting it right.
Right.
We won't be holding up the project.
Correct.
The goal is to really move forward the project, is, because I think everyone's excited to see some shovels in the ground and the project to move, so.
Great. Anything else? Nothing else? Is there a motion to read on first, to approve on first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property owned by the Town of Bluffton to Workforce State of Mind LLC located at 1095 May River Road and consisting of 1.78 acres, more or less, and identified as Beaufort County Tax Map Number R6103900000, and authorizing the execution recording of associated documents?
Second.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye.
I almost recused myself.
Well, you didn't. Um, so, we have a consent agenda item, for those of you new to this meeting and watching, they're very good reports, they're all of our staff reports, they do more than just come to council meetings, and it's all detailed on our website, on our Agenda Center, and very worthwhile, it keeps you in the know on what's going on in the town. There's also a town manager report, and there are a couple other items we put on. Is there anything here that y'all'd like more information on and pulled from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's a move.
Your second. Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye, opposed. That's unanimous. Is there a motion to go into executive session on three items? Update and discussions relating to acquisition of Ghost Roads in and around Old Town, that's FOIA 3478-2. Discussions relating to negotiations and contractual arrangements for proposed land acquisition on Buck Island Road, and 278, that's FOIA 3478-2, and personnel matters regarding town council appointments of boards, committees, and commissions, and that's FOIA 3478-1.
It's a move.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would you be okay if we take about a two, three-minute recess before we go into the...
Take a two-minute recess? Yes. Will we have action from executive session?
It's up to council, there's potentially that you could have action.
Okay, I'm doing, I'm doing discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. We go in there, we'll take a three-minute, I guess the man needs to be excused. We go in there, we'll take a three minute. I guess the man need to be excused.
Out of executive session, no votes were cast, no action was taken. There is action from executive session. And we have two council, we have two council members that are going to recuse themselves and sit in the audience and not on the dais. So you have Mayor Pro Tim Tumer, Mr. Hamilton and myself. And from executive session, there is action, is there a motion to remove Tim Wood from the accommodations tax committee effective immediately?
Suma.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state the saying up.
Aye.
Oppose? Is there a motion to adjourn?
He sounded like a speaker whenever he said it.